We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'd like to welcome you to our City of Palaca, May 11th, 2017, City Commission Meeting. We'll have our invocation by Reverend Willie McKinnon III, Pastor of Trinity Baptist Church of Palaca. Reverend McKinnon will also lead us in pledge. Everyone, please stand at this.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear most gracious heavenly Father, we come before you, Lord, we pray just as we go through this meeting tonight, a special blessing upon each and every one of the council members. Lord, I pray that you'll guide their thoughts and that it will be your ways and your meditations that come forth out of this meeting. Lord, as we come up to Mother's Day, I just want to pray a special blessing upon each and every mother here and grandmother here and each one that is represented. Lord, without the mother's love, we wouldn't understand your love. And Lord, again, I just lift this meeting up to you that it will be for you and for your glory and your honor. In your name we pray. Amen.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Lieutenant Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Borum?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
All members are present and accounted for.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the April 27th, 2017? Motion to approve. There's a motion on the floor. And the second, and ready this question. All in favor, say aye. Moving on to item one of the agenda of the recognitions proclamation kit. First proclamation we have is for Kids to Parks Day. Ms. Trigger, should we have any representatives for Kids to Parks Day?
You will have Jonathan Griffin, who will represent about the parks.
Mr. Griffin, would you join me at this time? Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas May 20th, 2017, is the seventh annual Kids to Parks Day organized in lunch by the National Park and Trust, whereas National Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, and whereas it's important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks because of its decline in park attendance over the last decades, and whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, melitus, hypertension, hypercholesterolemia, whereas National Kids to Parks is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants, and whereas National Kids to Parks Day will broaden the children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Whereas Palaca and Putnam County are the home to some of the most beautiful parks and recreation areas in the state of Florida, boasts the state's first designated Blueways Pedaling Trail and Barksom Trail, and is the trail hub of northeast Florida where three trails converge. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim May 20th, 2017, as National Kids to Parks Day in the City of Palaca. We urge our citizens to make time on Saturday, May 20th, to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state or national park, trail or blueway, and witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal the city of Palaca, Florida, on this 11th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2017. Terrell Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCauswell Williams, commissioners. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
It's on move.
It's motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Thank you, sir. Would you like to give us some information on what we've got coming up now with parks?
Yes, very quickly. We do have a large capital project on the riverfront underway, and we are continuing the improvements to all of the ballfields as well as other parks. I just want to thank the commission for their continued support and increasing increment-
That's on time. You're right on time. America's gonna vote for visible injuries and enjoy the majesty of our nation's waterways. And whereas, on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., approximately 75% of these fatalities are caused by drowning. A significant number of boaters lose their lives by drowning each year and would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas, the National Safe Boating Council sponsors the North American Safe Boating Campaign, a year-long campaign across the U.S. and Canada, which is focused on spreading the message of boating and safety and responsibility, and the critical importance of always wearing a life jacket each time on the water as part of the Ready, Set, Wear It Campaign on May 20th. Thousands of people from across the world will try to set world records for the most life jackets worn on one day, which is currently 10,917. And whereas, Palaca City Commission supports the goals of the North American Safe Boating Campaign and wishes to promote safe boating in Putnam County, proudly known as the best capital of the world, due to the boundless full recreational fishing opportunities where boating is part of our culture. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim May 20th through 26th, 2017, as National Safe Boating Week in the City of Palaca, and we encourage all citizens to participate in U.S. Coast Guard Plan activities on May 20th, wear life jackets, when boating, and learn about the practice, all safe boating habits, and witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal the city of Palaca, Florida, on this 11th day in the year of our Lord, 2017. Terrell Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCauswell Williams, commissioners. I'll entertain a motion. It's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We want to thank you, Ms. Fitz.
Thank you. I'll get a picture in a second. My camera's over there. Can I say a few words?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, you'll have to excuse me. It's been a very long drive. The biggest thing that we've done every year, as most of you have seen, a lot of you know me, we try to keep throughout the year, people don't realize that in the wintertime, summertime, boating's the same, whether it's cold, hot, no matter what. This is a week that's spent primarily just telling everybody, we really need to focus. We need to get back into the practice. You know, summer's coming, wear your life jacket. You know, before you even get ready, your life jacket should be looked at, make sure it's the right size, make sure it fits, even before you get in your boat. And that's the biggest thing. It's your responsibility as a person, not the boat owners. Your responsibility to make sure your life jacket fits, to make sure it's proper, because you know what? You're the one that's gonna be falling in the water. It shouldn't happen, but if it is, they're not gonna be the ones trying to get it on you. You're gonna have to know, does it fit? How can I button it? Is it right? It's too late when there's an accident that happens. It's way too late. So this is a special time. You will see some Coast Guard auxiliary people out there at the Blue Cloud, down near the water point, and up on the floating docks. They have lots of questions. They can answer any questions you have. We do have courses on safe boating that are offered in Green Cove Springs. It's one Saturday a month. And any other questions that you have, I will leave some cards in the back. But that's the biggest thing, is spread the word. You know, and you start with the kids on up, and then you all set a good example. And I thank you very much for supporting us year after year. This is like your 12th. Is that it with you? And-
I get a picture. That'll work. I have that for me.
But thank y'all so much for your time.
Thank you. For our next award, we've got a brief presentation before we presented the award. Can we have somebody hit the lights, please?
Well, back in 1986, the Seahawks decided to use their number-one draft pick on a fullback out of the University of Florida, and boy, did it ever pay off. It was Chad O'William, who joins us right now on the air. Very often, so get us updated on what the heck you're doing, they say.
I'm doing nothing other than being able, what I can do is my hometown, and just sitting around and being lazy and trying to fish a little bit.
Well, this is my revenge break, especially with Seattle. We spent eight seasons in a Seahawk uniform, and you were a unique fullback and had used the people label, fullbacks, to run. But you not only ran the ball a little bit, you caught the ball quick. You had 17 rushing touchdowns and 16 TD receptions. How did that all work out?
Well, I'm trying to push for the Hall of Fame, you know. He wasn't a lot of fullbacks. We go to the Pro Bowl, but for eight years there, my idea was, yeah, I think I ran far enough, called enough passes, blocked a lot of running backs, and I think I should have been, I can too, at least. Like I said, there was a lot of fullbacks at that time. I think I went 20 years, getting after that. I've left it. They tried to let fullbacks go, the ones that catching 10 passes and those ones that was getting 20 yards a year, they were going as a fullback in Pro Bowl. I didn't think that that was right, but it's okay.
And you're saying at 30, you really believe you had a 75-yard touchdown reception in both seasons. What do you remember about you in one of those?
Well, it was more like a trick play, but the folks who didn't think that I could reach to the end over 75 yards, but maybe you didn't sign it, and of course, it turned out really well. Everything in the beginning, it comes in the beginning, and you get to chase the ball, and I feel real free to do what I like to do, and try to do the best I can.
Any guys in particular, former Seattle teammates that you stay in touch with?
Well, I'm trying to stay in touch with Ryan Blais and me and Kirk one. We've been keeping in touch a little bit. Fort Worth, Kansas City, he's right there for us, but I don't see him that much. So, but those guys, I like that I do.
And who are named as one of the top 40 alumni? How did you feel about them?
That was great. When I got that phone to tell me that, I felt really good. It's great for us to honor the guys that have been around for a long time, and that was at the beginning of the season. It's great.
Well, congratulations on that, and great to see you again, Chad O. Come back soon.
All right, well, thank you very much.
So we're gonna ask John Elson to come forward with Sharon, your wife Sharon Williams. She's trying to video, and also, you know, daughter Erica will come up here, and with the rest of the family to stand and be recognized at this time. So the first, I guess there's no secret as who we're gonna give this award to, but this young man is probably the most famous citizen in Palaca. There's questions, but we would think that he's probably the most famous citizen in Palaca because his name is synonymous with Palaca. Many times we see people leave this community and they don't really claim home. They'll say they're from Jacksonville or somewhere, but he's always been a part of Palaca. Many people may remember the signs in East Palaca at the fruit market that said, "Give them hell, John El," when he decided to go to University of Florida. 1982 graduate, 81 state championship team, had over 52 career touchdowns in high school, Florida Georgia Hall of Fame, college All-American, number 15 pick in the NFL Draft in 1986, Seattle Seahawks Top 40, and he's been in many conversations for the Hall of Fame of the City of Palaca. And he's probably most famously known for his bream fishing and catches beckett these days. Retiree, but the thing about John El that's most special to me is my brother-in-law. And he was the person who really introduced me to the world. And John El's done that for many people. He's donated to many organizations and many entities throughout this community. And oftentimes, we take for granted when we have a person of his dark caliber in the community, especially when they're low-key. But John El Williams is a moderate. He is truly what Palaca is. He's humble, but dedicated. He could've went anywhere in the world, but he chose to come back home. And so we thank you for that. We thank you for truly being a hometown hero, and we've got an award for you right now, and it says, "Palaca Hometown Hero Awarded, Award Presented to John El Williams in grateful recognition of your devotion to the advancement and success of the City of Palaca and Putnam County through community advocacy. Palaca City Commission and Staff, May 11th, 2017." We want to present this to you. And also, we want to present you with the key to the City of Palaca because you truly make us proud, and we're glad that know that you're Palaca.
I want to say thank you to the City of Palaca, to my brother-in-law, Terrell, for this. Really never had any opportunity to get this from Palaca, and thanks to my brother-in-law who actually gifted it to me. I want to thank my wife and my family, which my wife is going through such a hard time right now, and my brother-in-law's also going through such a hard time, but it's okay, and everything will get better, and thank you.
I just want to say thank you for your commitment to Palaca, especially to our youth. Everybody know that I am an advocate for our youth and are a true advocate for our youth from your football camp, from you standing on the sideline on the Friday nights, coaching our kids. That means so much, not only to our kids, but to me, to see somebody that went away, did great things, and see the great things that we have here and want to bring those things and give life to those things. Because living in a community like this, we get caught up in all kinds of stereotypes. We get caught up in being the dying city, but you are one of the individuals that give us life, that give us life, and it starts with our kids. And as long as our kids have life, they grow up to be responsible citizens, that grow up to be productive throughout, not only Palaca, Putnam County, but throughout this great world, thanks to individuals like you. I appreciate you.
He never says no when you're asking to do something, but I want to say something about the other person, the person that got it back, and that's his wife, because I know she has that, pumping him up, keep him going, make sure he got dressed right, and taking care of him, and we want to thank you too, because you're part of why he is here, and we want you to know we love you, the whole family that you are.
We're gonna roll.
Yeah, John El, you've always been one of my heroes. I played at FSU, and I hate being old, but I'm glad I'm old enough that I didn't have to play next to you. That's the very thing you do for our city.
And I too want to thank you. I've known this family for quite a while, and it just pleased me to see everyone come in. But what I really want to say about you is not only thank you, but always been so humble. Your family's very humble, and that says a whole lot about who you are. Thanks a lot.
Again, I share those same sentiments, and I really thank you for all you have done for Palaca and the citizens of Palaca. Again, you could've chose anywhere else in the world, but you chose to stay here, and again, your humility, it just supersedes everything. And thank you for all you've done, for all of the youth, in terms of giving back your craft, your talent, teaching and instilling in them what it takes to be, to play at that level that you, because many people don't have that opportunity. Most people, they play from three to five years, but you had like a 13-year career, and you deserve to be in the Hall of Fame.
You're definitely in the Hall of Fame of Putnam County.
That's right.
So I think it's befitting, and not because it's my brother-in-law, but because of who he is and what he represents, the humility that we need in this community. It's a long time coming, and it's time that this community recognizes you, the things that you've done, the things that you've done solidly, and the things that you do out loud. And so again, and we thank you.
Mayor, I want to say one more thing. Those sunglasses you had, do you still got them? I'd like to see them. Pretty nice. All right, thank you.
Moving on, and it's kind of befitting that this next presentation comes right after John El, because they came behind each other in high school. And right now, I'm gonna ask that Ms. Rohair, if you would come forward at this time, along with your gun, and so. It's a wonderful time for us to really celebrate, to really just celebrate the greatness that's come out of Palaca. And tonight, we have an opportunity to recognize the 31st anniversary of military service for John Ruskowski, Lieutenant Colonel John Ruskowski, who nobody's gonna know who that is, because it's Rayme Ruskowski. And so it's John Rayme Ruskowski, who also was a great football player at Palaca High School, who followed, you know, followed in the footsteps of John El and Jarvis and those guys, and, you know, was an interception leader, held a record for interceptions at Palaca High School in football. But he's gone on to have a stellar career in the military with 31 years of service, and today, we want to make sure that we present you with the flag in his honor. We want to also let you know that we're gonna fly a flag here at City Hall on his behalf. And we thank you for allowing us to have your son in this community. We want you to let him know that we love him, that we appreciate him, and we salute him for all that he's done, and we look forward to him coming back home and retiring to the City of Palaca. And if all our recipients can hang around for a little bit after we take this next presentation, we'll take some photos. Now that we've had, we've recognized two of our hometown heroes, we get an opportunity to recognize the young people who are following their footsteps. And so at this time, we're gonna ask Megan Lingle, Miss Jim City Outstanding Team, if she would come forward. This is a distinguished community service award. This certificate of recognition is awarded by the City of Palaca City Commission to Megan Lingle, Miss Jim City Outstanding Team, 2017, in grateful recognition for your more than 550 volunteer community service hours through your Feed the Need Backpack Program for the benefit of children of Palaca and Putnam County through your collection of 20,000 food items and backpacks for distribution at Putnam County Schools, awarded this 11th day of May, 2017. Terrell Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, Tammy Ann Williams, commissioners. And we want to thank you.
Okay, Feed the Need is a nonprofit organization that gives children the opportunity to have food over the weekend. Some of them are not fortunate enough for their parents to go out and buy food for themselves, so I'm really blessed to be part of this program. I've been a part of this program for about five years now, and over the past five months, I have surpassed my 10,000 goal to reach 20,000, so I really appreciate all your support from the community for helping me achieve that.
I would be remiss if I don't say anything. I see the benefits of your work. Working in the education system, I just had to lift up a whole lot of bags of food today so that our kids will be able to eat, and it's because of hard work like you. And again, we appreciate you for thinking of our children here in Putnam County.
Let's give her another round of applause. Let's take a brief recess so that we can get some photos for the newspaper, and then we will reconvene in about five minutes. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting back to order. We'll not have public comments. We've got Mr. Norm Jutres with a public comment.
Norm Jutres, 412, Mahal Park. First, my deepest sympathy and condolences to the Hill family in their loss, and at this point, I know it's a lot of rhetoric that I keep repeating and repeating, but I just want to go one more time because I'm gonna head north for the summer, so I figured I'd give it a last shot. You know, if we did this 10 years ago, 10 years ago, in the City of Palaca, we averaged in the last 10 years approximately two houses per year, a little fraction of a house, but if we had done something positive, you know, a little bit of math, one plus one is two, two plus two is four, 10 plus 10 is 20. It's a lot better than one and two. If we could get some kind of program for infill lots, to get something moving in the whole community, regardless of where it is in the community, if it's an infill lot where we already have water and sewers. In the last 10 years, we got nothing out of those infill lots, other than the base tax that we charge, and now we're getting a fire fee or something else out of it. But we really get nothing in 10 years. If we look 10 years ahead, and we were able to start a program today of giving some kind of credit, yes, okay, you get two houses a year, you've got about $3,000 plus thousand in impact fees, extra fees, and so forth, but if we could make a concession on some of those fees, on those, that $3,000 a year, two houses, that's $6,000 or maybe $6,500, it might be $7,000, that we got in fees. In turn, in 10 years, those two houses gave us back maybe approximately $5,000 to $7,000 in taxes. If we could get that going in a movement to get larger quantities of houses under construction, the economy's turning right now, thank God, and again, all kinds of good things are happening in this community, and it's time to move. Let's get this thing accelerated, not wait and do one or two houses, or three houses a year. We want 10 or 20 houses a year. Multiply that $7,000 a year that we get in taxes out of these properties, times 10, for example, that's $75,000. You multiply it by 20, it's $150,000 more tax dollars that we have to work with, and we need to grow that base. We cannot let it deteriorate. We cannot let the shotgun houses go down, down, down. We need every infill lot with something happening on it. If we could average $100,000 for a lot, just do the math. It's simple. And look at 10 years down the road, what would it put in our coffees? What would it give you for money to work with? You guys are struggling to make things meet the budgets and everything else, you know. Thank God for math, for the nice award that math got here back a few weeks ago, but again, it's only a start, and we need to start now. Instead of 10 years ago, which we didn't do, and five years ago, we didn't do, let's not wait five years, and not let's wait 10 years. Let's do it now. Thank you.
We don't have impact fees, you know, water, that's it.
They take in, pay for the expense of doing what they have to do with them.
Right. I'll reiterate, we've got organizations that will be coming forward. I can all but guarantee you that you'll see them supposed to come in the next 30 days doing just what you're suggesting. We've got two interested groups that have approached us already, but we're gonna bring that before the commission, that are, they're looking, they're looking at bringing in some stuff. We had a great conversation as related to actually doing some infield with the SHIP program I sit on. Actually, with SHIP, I am, I chair the SHIP committee, and so there's been great conversation with that, so I look forward to some new initiatives coming forward, depending on what the county commission says as well. So I think there are some things down the pipeline pretty soon that you can look forward to. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda. Item A, Resolution Number 2712-45, authorizing execution of Passer and Associates Work Order, 17-54, in the amount of $7,500 for design pays and grant administration services for Airport Runway 927 and 1735, Mark and Rehabilitation Project, 100% FDOT and ready funding. B, Adopt Resolution 201712-46, authorizing execution of Passer and Associates Work Order, 17-55, in amount not to exceed $40,000 for design and bid, construction and bid administration and construction monitoring of Airport Tea Hangar and Taxi Land Rehabilitation Project, 100% FDOT ready funded. C, Adopt Resolution Number 201712-47, authorizing execution of Passer and Associates Work Order, 17-53, amount not to exceed $40,000, design and bid, construction and grant administration and construction monitoring services for Airport Southwest Quadrant Security Fenceing, 100% FDOT ready funding. D, Adopt Resolution 201712-48, authorize execution and scope and fee agreement with heirs of Associates in amount of $1,675 for RC Willis Water Treatment Plant Minor FDEP Permit Modification. E, Appointment of Darrell Futch to the Palaca Housing Authority Board for Directors for a four-year term ending April- We'll thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda. Item A, Resolution Number 2712-45, authorizing execution of Passer and Associates Work Order 17-54, in the amount of $7,500 for design pays and grant administration services for Airport Runway 927 and 1735 Mark and Rehabilitation Project, 100% FDOT and ready funding. B, adopt Resolution 2017-12-46, authorizing execution of Passer and Associates Work Order 17-55, in amount not to exceed $40,000 for design and bid, construction and bid administration, and construction monitoring of Airport Tea Hangar and Taxi Land Rehabilitation Project, 100% FDOT ready funded. C, adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-47, authorize execution of Passer and Associates Work Order 17-53, amount not to exceed $40,000, design and bid, construction and grant administration and construction monitoring services for Airport Southwest Quadrant Security Fence, 100% FDOT ready funding. D, adopt Resolution 2017-12-48, authorize execution and scope and fee agreement with heirs of the associates in amount of $1,675 for RC Willis Water Treatment Plant Minor FDEP Permit Modification. E, appointment of Darryl Futch to the Palacka Housing Authority Board for Directors for a four-year term ending April 12, 2011, per my recommendation. F, adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-49, authorizing the purchase of GMC Digger Derek truck in amount of $8,000 from Summerfield Electric. Or any add to consent agenda if you wish to add more.
Motion to accept.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any readiness? Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. So moving on to, moving on to public hearing. I don't think Darryl Futch is here.
He was out of town today. He said that if he got back in town soon enough, he would stop by the meeting whenever he got back in town.
But I can tell you, Mr. Futch has been, I've been wanting to be on the authority board for the last two years. And he's been doing a great job. I talked to him yesterday. We're now moving to public hearing. An ordinance extending a temporary moratorium on operation of medical marijuana treatment centers, licensed dispensing, and cultivation organizations within the City of Palacka, first reading.
An ordinance extending a temporary moratorium on the operation of medical marijuana treatment centers and licensed dispensing organizations within the City of Palacka for a period of six months, unless rescinded or extended by a subsequent ordinance or by development regulation or by subsequent amendment to the city's land development regulations regarding the regulation of marijuana treatment centers and licensed dispensing organizations, providing for conflict severability and effective date.
So move. There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. Got an update for the 100 block Riverfront Square development and its progress, Mr. Diamond.
Well, good evening. Corky Diamond, 124 St. John's Avenue, Palacka, Florida. I'd like to thank you all for giving me a couple minutes to tell you where we are. We'd like to thank Commissioners for coming down and walking through the buildings. Hope you enjoyed it as you were walking through. We put together a little presentation. We have a PowerPoint, I'll be brief as I possibly can. So I'm just gonna walk over here, if you can hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
So we hit those lights? All right.
I can see, I can see it.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
So we're giving a presentation briefly just to tell you where we are. This picture I put up just for fun today, I was on the third floor balcony. And I looked down and I saw a school bus full of kids on top of the River Center. I said, hey, they said, hey, I yelled out a big Tarzan call. They gave one back. And if you can see it, they're all excited, they're waving. And I will say that it's kind of appropriate that this River Center is working. It's being rented out, there's weddings there, parties up there. It's a wonderful thing, gets you coming down. So I just put that there last week. So, let me see. Good, good, good. So I'm starting out with the one in the past, me is the present. I say it for a couple of reasons. This picture here, folks, was taken, supplied to me by Larry Bean, taken in 1960, January 3rd. This is where we are today, City Hall. I just put this picture up here to show you. I just think it's kind of great. These are the old limestone blocks that this building was built from. This contraption actually moved materials around a little bit different than what we have today. This building here is what used to be attached to the north side of our buildings. So the north side of our building is Front Reed Street, okay? And so this is looking at it from 1916. Clicking this way, man, yeah. Okay, so that same building, when they took that building off, that's what was left over. For a while there, you see that blue line right there? That used to be an old bike shop. So this is what the buildings used to look like, and I'm saying just a short time ago. So that's the north side. These were the buildings just a short time ago. This is the Wintaker, the Bailey boarded up. And you see the west side of the Bailey building in here, the old brick. Somebody did a renovation that didn't match it really well. And then they put a little stucco detail here. And so that's what the buildings look like a short time ago. And then before we parted with the city, we had a certain period of time to do due diligence to make certain that we wanted to purchase the buildings. And so you see all the buildings were caving in. You know, if anybody remembers the old stucco that was on the building, we took the painstaking efforts to take all the stucco off there. This wall is on the east side of the three-story, took it down, reused it to build columns and painting and structural components. And here's another picture of that building. So this is what the buildings are looking like today, folks. And I put the word revitalization because we're all working together trying to revitalize the downtown, and it's really happening. The definition is to give new life. And certainly right now, these buildings have new life. This used to have the old stucco on it, so we took it off. This used to be a solid wall, we put in doors, and we built our own balconies here. This building here, it's called the Snow Building. Unfortunately, we had to take that whole building down and reconstruct the entire building. And these are the balance of the buildings. This is the west side of the buildings now. This used to have brown stucco, we put the windows and doors, we built the balconies. And now you see, if you remember looking at this picture here in particular, what these buildings used to look like. So we came back and opened it up, filled it in, added the columns so they balance out. So now we have somewhat of a symmetric building. Some of this wood, is Norm Dutras here? Yeah, so some of this wood came from the old Wilson Cypress site, Old Growth Cypress. We applied it on the building, and again, we took this off here. So everybody here, I believe, sees our potential at Palacka and we're doing great things today. There is a magazine called Florida Trend. I don't know if anybody's familiar with it, but okay, we are. It's really one of the state's leading magazines in real estate. It covers South Florida, Southeast Florida, Southwest, Central Florida, Northeast and Northwest. And they, they're just all about real estate. They do articles on big cities, Jacksonville, Tampa, Orlando, smaller cities like Deland, and the like. Well, back in 2012, Florida Trend came to Palacka. And in August of 2012, they did an article, and this was a picture that they took. And the article was incredibly complimentary. And if anybody would like a copy of this, I'd like to get it to you because they were really prognosticating. They were talking about the opportunity that Palacka has. 250,000 members, most of the subscribers, most of them averaging from the world for $250,000. So I'm gonna just, I put some bullet points and brief summary. They started out by saying Palacka has one of the most beautifully sighted downtowns in the state. The leading magazine in the state of Florida says Palacka has one of the most beautifully sighted downtowns in the state. And we all know it to be true. They then graduated into a little article about the Hundred Clock Revitalization Physic in 2007. There was an effort by another developer, but unfortunately, it didn't happen. Nobody was to blame, it was a tough time just before the depression hit us. They then moved along, they said the city focuses on $1.1 million Riverfront revitalization. The city, Jonathan was a big part of it, he's left, no, he's still here, a big part of this. So this, this was all blank, if you all remember. They came in and did horizontal improvement, street improvements, landscape improvements. And so this picture, you can't really see it, these little trees, I gauge on it, a lot of help when he put them in there because I said they're too small, but they certainly have grown, he said Corky will grow. And you see here, the hotel's not here, this is the big old palace, nothing here, and these old buildings. And now, I took a picture the other day, and this is what it's looking like. The hotel's in place, the River Center's in place, the buildings are in place. So there's a lot going on. They talked about the environmental center, the education. They said there were some plans to do it, but we'll put a check there. They talked about the water taxi, the trips to various points of interest. Now, I'm gonna turn to Mary Lawson Brown, and I have to personally congratulate you. I was speaking with the Lever Kitchens after a Sony meeting the other day. She told me that you had the vision as early as 1995?
I think so, it's been so long now.
I mean, talk about persistence, Mary Lawson. But I have to tell you real quick, my dad turned 83, my mom's 75 on the same day, about a month ago. My brother, a couple days later, 53. I invited my whole family to Palacka. They loved Palacka, we played golf, we went downtown, there's new restaurants, old restaurants. Then we chartered the boat. And we jumped on that boat. And for anybody who hasn't been on this boat, I had you guys get on this boat. The boat travels about 15 knots, nice and comfortable. It's run by the Lagasse family, they do a great job, the music sounds fantastic. We bring food, have some drink, wonderful time, great amenity. It's gonna bring people to the city. Gives those people that don't have a boat an opportunity to spend time on the river. So what we'll do with that is we'll just say check. And then in that article, they talk that they were seeking a private partner for the downtown redevelopment. And I guess at this point, you can also check that out too. So what we've done is we've taken some pictures of the inside of the buildings. For any of you folks that haven't been through the buildings, I invite you to come down and take a look at them. They're really turning out fantastic, is one of our star groups. One of our star students, she's helping bring the students into the buildings. Real briefly, guys, what we've done inside the buildings, throughout the buildings, real bamboo wood flooring, exposed brick, custom-made kitchen cabinets and bathroom cabinets, three-centimeter granite carpet floors, stainless steel appliances, low voltage lighting, LED, low voltage throughout the building, it's energy efficient, really coming together. And this is one of the students that is standing on our third floor balcony. The view is just magnificent. Last slide talked briefly about a public-private partnership that truly works. I think Palacka should be commended. A lot of cities try to do the public-private partnerships, they don't work sometimes. It's a perfect example of how public-private partnerships work. I put in here, the city's vision is to take vacant buildings and turn them into, well, they put them back on the tax rolls, revenue for the taxpayers of our city and the county. So these buildings were up, I think the tax rolls, Matt, for maybe 17 years?
Quite a while.
The city got them back on the tax rolls. So we've been paying taxes for the past couple of years. Also, we're paying building permit fees, so we've paid a substantial amount of money. But that's what happens when you redevelop. The infill downtown space, you see it, Norm Dutras mentioned it, there was an article in the paper today about it. Downtown is starting to really flourish, we're filling in. And it demonstrates that the city is pro-business under the leadership of the mayor and new city commission. People are now seeing that Palacka is pro-business, it's the best thing that can happen to Palacka. So we've saved the history of the building, which is wonderful. We've brought people together, listen, I'm down there every day. Come down after 5 o'clock, there's families down there, there's couples down there, there's children down there. They're almost walking around downtown feeling as though it's Disney-esque, it's really coming together. You've continued the vision by moving the ball further than it's, than it's been done in a long time. We're proud to have been a partner, we've been proud to be part of it. We hope that you're as proud of us as we are of being a part of the city.
Any comments from the commission?
Thanks.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you for investing in this great city, your investment definitely, you know, it's a, it's worth the sword to come across the bridge and see that the building, the condition that it was. And to cross it now to see what it now is, it's remarkable. Time, you know, delayed doesn't necessarily mean denied, you know, it's always one of those things that we have to work through the case, and I'm happy that we were able to work, finally work through it.
As, as are we, it's a partnership.
I'd like to say, I've, I've got a saying that I save my commission all the time. We're better together. And empty work together. Now we need to help and promote and let people know that the space is available.
Yes.
And get something in there. I think once we get one thing really going, I think that the Environmental Center helped us some. But I think the boat will bring people here, and as they see some of these things, they'll wanna come back and live here and start businesses here. And I think we're getting to that point. Government makes us move slower than we'd like to. We have been talking about some of this stuff for a length of time, I've sat up here and seen. But I think with this hard work and commission, we will accomplish some of the things that we'd like to see, see done. And we'd like to, I'd like to thank you because I was here when they bought those buildings, and I know how hard it was. We had three or four people who came here that wanted to develop it, but stuff just didn't work out. And now they're beginning to look like we live here. I'd like to change our name for our city. I think we need to go back to the Gem City, is that what we had before, Gem City?
You know, I have, I have a publication, it's called The Book, that was written back in the late 1800s. I'm gonna send it to you, it was the Gem City, and they were talking about the same things we're talking about today. I don't know if you've read it, but it is the Gem City, it truly is.
I tell you, my family came here in 1914 because they thought this was a place of prosperity that would move along. And now my family's into their sixth generation of Lawson Browns, and I think that it is a good place for us. We all, I look up here, all of us chose to come back. And I think if we look at it like that and start calling ourselves the Gem City again,
I love it.
That people would begin to believe us and come and join us.
You know, on that note, I'll just say, I neglected to say, Florida Trend has reached out to us a couple of times. And we haven't said come yet. I'd like to, when we're, I think we're ready, talk to the mayor and the commissioners. They wanna come and do a follow-up article. I mean, we've talked about rebranding Palacka for years, we've talked about hiring consultants. There's no better marketing than having the city make a promise and then have that delivered five years later. So Florida Trend is willing to come here, and when 250-plus thousand people read that article, I think we leave the word and name Gem City in there and make a big impact.
Well, again, I'd like to thank you for your investment, I mean, for first preserving the building and your, your investment, the major investment. I know you probably got in there and saw some things that may have not been what you expected in terms of when you're, in your progress.
Just a couple.
But you know, I'm ready for the baby right now. So, you know, long story short, I mean, coming over the bridge, it looks really good. I did get a chance to go in with Tom Townsend, looked at the building, but still, I don't have the subject or the knowledge or the, you know, building experience as to how long it'll take. But again, if you need anything from the city, you just let us know. If there's anything you need from us to help move it forward, so just...
Thank you.
Do you need anything from us?
No, we're in good shape. So the students will be, we'll have 60 students moving in and doing the job.
Okay.
And we're in good shape. But it's good to know if I couldn't pick up a phone and ask. But right now, we're in great shape.
Right, I certainly appreciate that.
And I'll make this quick, Mayor. I too wanna say thank you for all you're doing. I'm going through that building, I was totally excited to see what you've done. I did ask at one point, if you're sane, I'm telling you, you have big dreams, but you're doing a wonderful job. I'm excited and can't wait to see the changes that you're bringing about and just getting everybody in there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you.
I appreciate it coming down.
And again, as I told you, anything we can do, you know, I'm glad that we have that partnership and whatever we can do.
We can't thank you enough.
The balcony is, I mean, just looking at it and looking at the traffic, and then when we have any festivals, different things of that nature, I think it's gonna work out good for whoever occupy those spaces.
We can enroll in college again, and we can occupy.
We sure can. I never got my degree, maybe I will. I educated like the mayor, I just spent one year in college.
As I said before, the tour is much better than the report. But the report is, I think the report gives everybody an idea. And so we thank you. I won't prolong it. I mean, we're glad to see that the progress is being made. And we definitely appreciate you having the vision. And so again, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for opening your doors up to us. And we definitely appreciate you.
Thank you, we appreciate you all as a partner.
Thank you.
Moving the agenda to our administrative reports. Mr. Yul.
Sure.
Mr. Crowe. Captain Newcomb, welcome.
Thank you. As you guys are aware, we did the Key Putnam Beautiful Cleanup last Saturday with Black Pride. And then we are preparing for the next Key Putnam, I'm sorry, the next Palacka Pride Cleanup, which is June, Saturday, June 17th. And the area of that cleanup is 11th and Main to 11th and Napoleon up through to North 24th Street. And we're starting to communicate with the churches this week on it.
Aphil Randolph Avenue, that's the new Aphil Randolph Avenue. So the North 11th Street Corridor, the 11th Street Corridor is, we're gonna start trying to coin the phrase Aphil Randolph Avenue. And so we renamed it, we renamed it February. And so, but definitely, I can tell you, this guy that's sitting, that's standing here today has, he has taken Palacka Pride on his shoulders. He has, he has reorganized it, he has worked tirelessly to make it work. And he's been totally committed to keeping Palacka Pride going, getting the organizations out. And I definitely wanna give you a round of applause for the work that you've done.
I'd like to say something, we got a bunch of people complaining about this town. And they say it's not clean, and it's not this, and it's not that. If they'd stopped complaining and come and help, all of us would do better. You know, we can easily complain, if you got something wrong, and you got a better idea, if you got something wrong and you got a better idea how to do it, or wanna get with somebody to make it better, it makes it better for all of us. And we need to, we need to think about it because Palacka- think about it, because Palaca Pride and these commissioners, I haven't done it in a few weeks, in a few months, because I got a bad back, but they get out there themselves, and we go to every neighborhood to work it out, and so does our police and fire departments, and we need to be mindful, that they're just like everybody else, they don't have to do it, they do it for the love of this town, and if you think that it's not cleaned enough, then you get out there in your yard in front of your house, if you don't want to go anywhere else, and do what the rest of us do.
Over a hundred-and-fifty thousand pounds of trash in two and a half years, and picked up in this community, and I can tell you, it's mentoring, it's community organizations, it's churches coming together along with our fire department, our police department, Public Works, it's community partnership, and it's what Palaca is, and so, you know, Matt's taking the lead on that, we definitely thank you for that, Captain. We're moving forward, and we're seeing additional phases of it coming together. Mr. Yudres, you're out there, we're seeing this thing come together, new faces coming all the time, the vision that's been, that was the spin-off from it, was our cleanup, greening up countywide cleanup, where we dared to dream as a commission to have five-hundred volunteers, and we've done that for two straight years in the county, we've partnered with all the municipalities, Marshall Marinella has been awesome, she's been the greatest partner you can have with Key Putnam Beautiful, and this thing has grown every year, we're gonna get to the point where we've got to extend our go past five-hundred just to make it go bigger, but I can tell you, Key Putnam Beautiful, the Health Department, all the partners that we have out there have just done a great job, the Palaca Police Department has embraced the concept, along with the Fire Department, they're out there every time we're there, and it's just an awesome time, and so, again, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Griffin and his crew, they do very well, Public Works is there, so we make it work, and I'm sure you've got some more reports.
Two quick things, we do have a lot going on, but all I want to report on is, I just want to make you aware that Clay Electric volunteered their crews and their equipment today to help move four poles at Shaw Buckfield, and it's associated with the ballfield improvements that we're doing, so we want to thank them for their efforts, and also I want to remind everybody we've got the Wilsons Bass Tournament next week, so if you could get out there and show them our appreciation, it's a tough year for them with everything going on at the riverfront, and we want to keep them around.
Volunteer parking starts at three a.m., if anybody wants to be there. Mr. Suggs has already volunteered, and Mr. Holmes is on his second year, and so, we've got our, so we've got Mr. Castleberry, who's retired, who doesn't have anything else to do.
Oops.
So, Mr. Reynolds, don't say that word, which word, the one that starts with B?
Oh, budget? Well, that is coming up, but I just wanted to mention that, May one, as I've mentioned at previous city commission meetings, the combination of the billing as well as the taking of payments is now at the Palaca Gas Authority, we've been working through some of the little unforeseen things, however, in my opinion, and speaking with Mr. Kittner, I think it was relatively smooth, so, but we're gonna continue working through that this first month when we get the first round of combined bills out, and we're very fortunate to have everybody over at the Gas Authority, they are extremely helpful, and they've gone above and beyond, so just wanted to thank them publicly for that, and also wanted to mention that we've had several members of the city family that have lost loved ones in the past week or so, our chief, Mike Lambert, our HR coordinator, Deborah Robinson, as well as Mayor Hill, so just wanted to ask everybody to keep them and their families and their thoughts and prayers, so, and that's all I have.
I had an opportunity to go over to the Gas Authority today and visit with the ladies, and I can tell you, they're happy, they're excited, and so I definitely think it's gonna be a great move for everyone.
Is it true, can I ask a question, is it true that we have to have, we have new accounts to go online, or is everything still the same?
What do you mean?
Since they've been combined, once we go online, do we have new accounts that we have to call down there and get, new account numbers or what?
What information would you use to pay?
Yes, to go online and pay.
During the first month, what happened is, any of the city's water customer accounts that also had a gas account, our customer accounts had to be closed, and so they're handling it on the internal parts, if you call in to make a payment, they have to look up the previous account number to figure out the amount you were owed, but going forward after this month, that will be resolved. When you get your first combined bill, it'll have a different account number on it, and then that will be the one moving forward. There's also what's called a pay ID, so if you call in to pay over the phone, you have to have that ID, and that would have changed as well, but hopefully this first month, once everybody gets their new combined bills, all of that will be on it, and it should be, you know, smooth from there on.
Okay.
Those will remain the same.
Thank you.
Mr. Yudres.
Nothing.
Mr. Inroom City Attorney.
These meetings are a lot more fun than the daily meetings.
Say that again. Say that again.
Yeah, say it again.
I tell you, we're glad to have you here.
Thank you, sir.
You know, there's nothing like having you work, trying to work a second job when you retire, man, so, and definitely, again, thank you for all your years of service to the county.
Yes, sir.
As a whole, unfortunately, you're a Seminole, but it's okay.
There's always an A in the name.
Mr. Inroom City Man, Acting City Manager.
All right, just my report.
Got it. Commissioner Gorman.
All right, just information, for the most part, we have free pre-K at Melon Elementary, they're offering that for twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year, to be eligible, the child has to be four years old before September one, twenty-seventeen, and basically all you need is your proof of residence and your childbirth certificate in order to participate. The, on the second of May, at the school board, we were able to distribute five computers to deserving kids at the high school, we're gonna continue that process, hopefully we do the hundred-and-eighty as we previously allocated, so that was our first wave of distributions, and that went well. We also linked up with Lowe's, we visited several schools and did evaluations, so they're in the process of seeing what they can do to improve those schools from an aesthetic standpoint, painting of rooms, or improving steps, ramps, or anything like that, and also, last but not least, people have the opportunity to go out, I mean, teachers have the opportunity to go out, and they have a toolbox for teachers where you can get a grant anywhere from twenty-five hundred to a hundred thousand dollars, so, some, one school knew about it, but the rest of them didn't, so this is just information sharing, so, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wills.
Nothing, just my condolences. See you in your family.
Mr. Campbell.
Same, I can notice as to those that are in difficult times, the transition, especially private, knowing that to be acting as president of a community. Outside of that, if you have not had the opportunity to check out the River City Players, they are currently having a play.
He's late.
Getting, that I have to get over to a show, but getting ceremony, I have a little cameo appearance that I, they say I steal the show, but if you haven't had the opportunity, I think Mr. Yudres was there last night, it's a really fun show, we have individuals that are from Clay County, St. John's County, and Putnam County, that makes up the cast, it's five, it's a five-person cast, it's very funny, like I said, I do have a little cameo. I'm finalizing the things that I'm going to do over the summer that will be family-oriented type of events with the commissioner, whatever it is, be it tonight, be it whatever it is, it's gonna be with the commissioner, I am in the process of finalizing that, and I will be making that information public within the days to come. Outside of that, I think we're doing great hats off to our financial officer for stepping in at a time where our city manager was out, he had to step in, handle the, you know, handle everything around here while doing the transition, and everyone that helped him, see, everybody, I'm just eternally grateful for the sacrifices that you all make, we say it often, but I'm honestly, I'm honestly, honestly, honestly grateful for the fires that you all put out, any emails, anything, any questions that we have, you all make yourselves available for us, and that means the world to me, so thank you.
Mr. Brown.
John, with the airport, we had our airport meeting, and as you saw on our consent agenda, we had several things going on with the airport, we have been very fortunate, and the FFA people and the DOT people, that, they help us find the dollars because they have faith in our, we're doing a lot of improvements out there, and the city is not paying for the majority of it, sometime we get full grants, sometime it's partial grant, John, will you tell them those people who help us with this?
Well, sure.
Our engineering people look for them and help us write them and stuff, and if you give them a minute, I think they'll even be brought up to date because I think our airport is gonna be one of a kind when we get it all together.
This all started, what, ten, eleven, twelve years ago with a gentleman by the name of Andrew Halesko, and Passaro Associates, he would stop by and talk to the city manager every once in a while, said, I think, I think we can get something over there for him, and he would get a little bit of resistance for a year or two, but he finally was able to convince the Airport Advisory Board that there is funding available to help grow your airport, you know, little percentage contributor, contribution from the city, a small percentage, so, Andrew was really a visionary, and he has been outstanding, he is an adjunct professor at Emory Building University, and he teaches airport development, there's nobody knows more about growing an airport than Andrew Halesko, and our Airport Advisory Board members, I mentioned him, Judd Newfeld is the chairman, Wayne McLean, John Browning, Ken Johnson, Melissa Miller, Dana Jones, and a couple pilots, Hugh Rawls, and Jeff Happel, and I'll leave anybody out, of course, yourself, you're there every month.
But those pilots from out of town have really helped push our airport, I was really surprised that they were as interested in helping us, and I wanted you all to know that they give their time and come to you once a month faithfully to help us move forward a little bit, and Halesko, we need to say a thank to him or give him a thank you letter, he just got awarded and a big thing with the Northeast Florida, is it Northeast Florida? A bigger area than that, what's that thing he just got?
Well, he got promoted, he actually promoted in his firm to partner or something like that, and there was a nice half-page article taken out by the Airport Advisory Board announcing that and commending him, he really is.
He was definitely a miracle, he was a miracle, so.
And I think one thing that we failed to mention with Andrew Halesko is, every year for the last two years, Andrew Halesko has actually taken kids from the city of Palaca to the Orlando Magic Games, the Magic bus comes in, feed them t-shirts, tours, they go on the court, and he's committed to doing that on an annual basis because he's committed to developing young people in this community, and it started from a Northeast Florida League of Cities meeting where he talked about wanting to get back to the community, and he does that, and he does everything he can to move forward, so we definitely, it's a great, it's a great working relationship.
I would like us to kind of do a recognition of him because he really is the power behind that, and John, I'm telling you, that airport wasn't anything until we got John, and we had a couple of managers and stuff, and when I first got here, the mayor and the guy that had managing the airport were fighting each other all the time, and it was stymied for years. Since John has gotten here, he has had the foresight to follow up on stuff, we've got that fly-in that we have and everything, and I'd like to see a thank you go out to those folks that give us funds, we had the lady that comes in with, is it DOT, FFA?
DOT.
DOT, she comes in and she's at that meeting, everyone, and if they spot something that they think will help us, they bring it to us, we look for it, but they bring it to us because they have that much faith in us, and I'd like for us to do some kind of thank you for them.
If you recall, we recognized Mr. Halesko last year.
But he done more stuff this year, so, I mean, I think that, we don't, we get beat up so for the stuff that we, they say we don't do, but nobody says thank you for the stuff we do, and that's the way it goes, and so, I think the more that we tell people we appreciate them, the more they understand and the more help we get, so I'd like to, I'd like to see us do that for those folks that are helping us bring the dollars in there and really advance that airport, because I hope in a few years, we'll have good pricing stuff out of there, or businesses going into the area.
That other three thousand feet of runway.
Thank you for your kind words.
And I'd like to really thank John, John puts up.
Well, that's kind of you, but those other airport managers and stuff did not have the money that's coming to the airport that I've had the pleasure of having, great partnership with Passaro, the Advisory Board, Commission, support everything that we can bring to you, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I forgot one other thing, just really quick, the Palaca Police Department, Police Athletic League has partnered again this year with the County Recreation Department to do Camp Higher Ground, and we are taking applications for the kids starting this week, it is a hundred-and-eighty-five dollars per child.
For the entire summer?
Yes, sir, for the entire summer. Camp is Monday through Friday from eight a.m. to three-thirty p.m., drop-off starting at seven-thirty a.m., and we are offering late pickup up through four p.m. I listed the parent-participant information sheet is on our Police Department's Facebook page, but if there's, if anyone has any questions, they can reach out to me, Chief Shaw, or Captain Toby Williams.
What about age group?
Age group.
I mean, what's your starting age, one or age?
Eight, eight years old up to fifteen, I think.
Can you send the information, can I leave it to us?
Yes.
I'll kind of help share that out as well.
Yes, sir, I believe it's eight to fifteen.
Okay.
And also, Chief Shaw and Mr. Suggs are at the Crime Stopers, that, or thing, tonight.
Yes, sir. That was it, thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks, man.
You got thirty-two.
I need to thank the staff, and Matthew Johnson, and Fire Department, Police Department, everybody, it's a team effort, I left him out there, talking about the team, teamwork that goes into the airport, so, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Staff, everybody.
See, I want to brag a little bit, I mean, they're supposed to hire Halesko, I think that was a very.
Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir. First of all, I wanted to make sure we sent our condolences to Deborah, to Deborah Robinson, she lost her brother last week, and also Chief Lambert, he lost his sister. Last Friday, I lost my biggest fan, my biggest supporter, but I gained a guardian agent, and so, you know, she doesn't have to suffer anymore, I thank everybody for your, you know, for your condolences, your well wishes, and your prayers, it's been a tough week, but I'm at peace because I know my mother doesn't have to suffer anymore, but as for the city of Palaca, I'm excited because it feels like we're a family, regardless of things that occur, perceptions that are out there, the city's moving forward, I think the staff and the commission have truly embraced what it is to be a Palacan, they're gonna be growing pains, there are gonna be some tough times, but it didn't take a day to break it, but it's not gonna take a day to fix it, but what I see is an opportunity for us to have the vision that the Gem City shines the way it should, and I'm excited, I could easily bow out tonight, but there's no way that I'm gonna miss the excitement that's going on in this community, and so I thank each and every one of you for being here, I thank the familiar faces that I see in the audience, but I also want to recognize our veterans that are here, thank you for your service, thank you for your time, thank you for taking time out of your schedule to be here, you know, Palaca is the what's happening city, as Commissioner Campbell often says, but it's...